Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, July 17th, and I will note for the record that all three commissioners are present in the Nat U Hill Room. We will begin with our public statement, read by Commissioner Jones. Thank you.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their sorts. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Right. Thank you so very much. Next, we will move on to department updates. I cannot see who we have from the Health Department. Ah, Ms. Kelly's here. Great.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just a few updates for you today. The emergency room visits for COVID-like illnesses have slightly increased over the last week. However, wastewater detections are still low at this time. The Health Department is now able to provide quick-for-life tobacco cessation referrals. You can call 812-349-2150 for more information. And as always, we have vaccines available through our public health clinic. You can call 812-353-3244 for an appointment.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Githens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
All right. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it. All right. Is there any other department that has an update? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. We do have a department update, and Commissioner Githens will deliver it. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to ask TSD to put the spreadsheet up that was sent on to you. There's been a lot of discussion for months now about the location of the new jail. And so I'm a numbers person. I like to think in numbers, and I put together this spreadsheet with as much information as I could to help us make a decision about the location. So you notice I looked at three sites because we know that Hopewell is completely off the board at this point, as are anything else that we even remotely considered. When you look at the purchase price, we know that the county already owns the Thompson location, but there are a lot of other costs that come along with trying to use Thompson. And so I went down through different things. You can see what assumptions I've made here. If we were trying to go with Fullerton, we would need to have it rezoned. That could take up to another year. And that could incur a cost of up to $10 million just to wait. And we don't know if that, in fact, would be approved. If it's not, then we're back to stage one with where we go looking at things. But delaying, according to our folks that actually build jails and other facilities, cost goes up about 5% a year right now for building. It varies a bit, but that's sort of the current average. So if we're looking at a $200 million, both jail and justice campus, that would indicate that a delay of one year would incur an additional cost of $10 million, which would bring the total cost of that location to over $20 million. I did the same thing with the Thompson property. Now, we would need to purchase a small additional property there for about $1 million. We would need to remove a huge debris mound that could cost $5 million to remove. We would probably have to pay over $1 million to have high-voltage lines rerouted, and before we could even do that, we would have to have a plan approved by Duke, which, again, it may or may not be approved, which would delay at least by two and a half years. That means that the cost would increase by $25 million, so that even if we were to use a property that we already own, just the property and the delays would cost us over $32 million additional. We've also been looking at an area in North Park. Right now, the price that we're potentially looking at is over $11 million. There are no additional problems that could come along, I don't think, with North Park in terms of substantial delays. Yes, there might be another month or two as we look at things, but I think that that, in my mind, is the least costly in terms of what we're looking at overall. And so I've tried to put those numbers together to show what that would mean. Now, this spreadsheet assumes that the jail and the justice campus will be co-located. This is in keeping with the recommendations from both Sheriff Marte and with Presiding Judge Mary Ellen DeCof. It assumes that the overall cost of building a new jail in the justice campus will be $200 million. I know that this is a staggering amount of money, but as I've said, delaying will only increase the cost. And delaying co-location will incur the cost of renovating the current justice building and of additional jail staff and vehicles. Delaying or foregoing co-location decreases the overall safety of the jail staff and of the general public, and I think that needs to be part of our considerations, too, that safety is part of this decision-making. And then also, the goal is to begin the design and building of a new jail and justice campus in a way that will minimize costs while maintaining public safety. So if, sorry. We need to figure out where it's going. We can't move forward without it. We can't move forward on the design. We can't move forward on other things. Now, last Thursday, Sheriff Marte and his staff did a presentation before the County Council and the County Commissioners titled "Understanding Functional Jail Capacity." I thought it was extremely well done. I really appreciated the kind of exercise that they put people through to discuss things, and I came away with that meeting with two strong impressions. First, that a 400-bed jail would be too small for future needs, and that we need to move forward on building a new jail now. We cannot continue to put this off. The sheriff has also said multiple times that he thought we should build a 500-bed facility, and recently, the assessment from our QAW also recommended a 500-bed facility, all in keeping. It's time to make a decision. We can't keep putting this off. So I think it's time to move forward. I think it's time to make a decision on this, and I hope that we can work with our County Council colleagues to get something done expeditiously, and that we can move forward. At this point, I think that North Park is the most reasonable location for what we need to have done.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that. It always helps to see the numbers, so thank you for that, including the cost of inflation. Commissioner Jones, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes. Another couple numbers. The population of Monroe County is predicted to grow by 17% a year, and the jail population stays at the same level, no matter how much our population goes up. I believe that was about 2.7% of our population tends to get jailed. I don't, I think our judges do a really good job of trying to avoid jailing people or trying to get them out as quickly as they can be, but in the end, with a growing population, it's just not realistic to expect a jail of 400 beds to continue to work for our community, which just means that we're kicking the can down the road, and before long, other elected officials are going to have to try to deal with a jail that's too small.
May I add also that my thinking on this has really been changed?
Yes.
Initially, when we started to look at this, and as we toured other facilities, I was not in favor of the size of a jail. But after hearing what I consider very reasonable presentations, after understanding how you cannot mix certain populations within a facility, I support the sheriff's efforts at this point.
Yeah, and I'll just note as well, just as a sort of an asterisk on this discussion, is if we say, you know, 500 beds, that sounds like an awful lot, and it is, but that's not what they call the functional space, because you do have to have the capacity to address the various levels of violation. You have to have, you have to address safety concerns for those who are incarcerated. You have to address and provide safe space for people who don't necessarily have a, have a gender identity that's different than their biological identity. We have to ensure that if somebody is injured or sick, that they are cared for. And so this is not a functional number. It is the total space. I think I was, for a very long time, focused on building a larger shell in a smaller facility, meaning fewer cells, but the issue with that is that if we find that we need more cells and we still are, you know, we're paying down a bond from jail tax and other taxes to pay for the jail, then how do we afford additional cells? I mean, that's, that's a huge issue, right? And so we would, we would be in stasis for, you know, 20 years, potentially. So I think that's another, another concern.
And even with that, you have to build the HVAC system, the kitchen, the laundry, all to fit that bigger facility. You can't just keep adding to those as well. I think another thing that struck me last week that during the presentation by the sheriff and his staff was that they said, if you have two or more defendants from the same case, you cannot house them in the same block. That had never occurred to me before. And so this is another reason why you have to have those different blocks available for housing folks. And even with our current facility, with the way things were described, it takes a lot of extra staff just to move people around from one block to another. Somebody, they, they have things kind of at a stasis point, and then somebody new comes in, and they have to shift things, and they have to shift things very, very quickly. And so that requires a lot of extra staff to be able to move people from one location to another.
No, I just agree with all of that, and I think it's time that we get serious and move forward.
Absolutely. And that's just to say that we have not yet selected a location because we are still waiting for some more information. The Phase II environmental report has not come in yet, and so a site has not been selected, but clearly, we're continuing to research and investigate North Park as a, as a potential site. So, and if anybody has not seen the recording of the presentation we had from the Sheriff's Department last week, I encourage you to go to our website, go to the calendar, click on that meeting, and you can see the recording. It was, what it was, was a shortened version of part of our training that we all took with the Criminal Justice Institute and Department of Justice called the Pony Training. So that was, that's what that was. Anything else?
Is that enough?
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I appreciate the, the number crunching. And we will move on now to public comment. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on the agenda. We're limited to three minutes per speaker. Please state your name and your county of residence. You may raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right. Seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item, please.
Move approval of the minutes from July 10th, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits?
No.
All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes for July 10th, 2024, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. And it's funny how you, you read these things, and you read them, and you read them, and then when you're saying it out loud, you're like, no, 2024. So we'll make that correction. So motion carries 3-0, and we will move on to our next agenda item, please.
Move approval of claim stock accounts payable July 17th, 2024.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Miller?
Good morning. Excuse me. The accounts payable claims docket for July 17th, 2024 totals $1,922,997. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions from the board?
I had emailed Ms. Miller about stuff, and wow, I did not realize how expensive the hats are that the sheriff's department uses.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah. But thank you for following up with the other.
You're welcome.
They are expensive. They're heavy.
Okay. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right. Seeing none. All those in favor of approval of the claim stock accounts payable July 17th, 2024, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. We don't have any reports today, so we will move on to new business.
Move approval of the SRI Inc. Online Tax Sales Services Agreement. Fund name: County General. Fund number: 1,000. In an amount not to exceed $5,000.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Carter?
Hello. Good morning, Commissioners. Today, you have the SRI Services Agreement to hold the tax sale for the 2024 sale online using their online platform. This is for the sale only. The county will still complete noticing, title searching, tax collection, bidder registration, and verifications. SRI's fees are $20 per parcel that is offered in the sale. That is paid from County General, unappropriated. It's paid from a tax sales fee process, and that is for all certified parcels. This fee covers the SRI fees as well as other miscellaneous costs to the county. This agreement did have one change from the years prior, so everything was the same except that the agreement will auto-renew annually unless within 30 days of renewal, SRI or the county decides to provide written notice of intent. So this year, we currently have our tax sale scheduled for Thursday, October 3rd. We have 114 certified properties in the sale, and the list will be posted online and in the Herald Times. Bidders, bidders can register online September 3rd through September 27th. And last year, we had 114 certified properties and got down to about 31 properties sold, so, or offered in the sale. So that's, that's our agreement.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
Not really. I know that you've used this group in the past, and things seemed to have gone pretty smoothly.
Yeah. And just to be clear, we, we have to pay SRI initially because they're doing the title search and all of those, those steps, and then they get paid back. We get the money back.
We do the title searching.
We do the searching.
They just are essentially hosting the sale for us.
Okay, so they're putting the sale together. They're not doing any of that legal work. Okay. I was gonna say, that's really a bargain.
And he still does that.
Okay, got it. All right. Thank you so much. But we do recover those fees from the buyers.
Yes.
For parcels. Great. Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. See, I'm glad I, just to be clear, for me, thank you so much. Appreciate that. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. It's seeing none. All those in favor of approving the SRI Inc. Online Tax Sales Services Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you so much. Next item.
Move approval of the addendum to the Bluestone Storm Debris Removal. Fund name: County General Emergency Management. Fund number: 1,000. And this is for an additional $80,000, so it would bring the amount up so it does not exceed $130,000 presently. But I'd also like to amend this to authorize Commissioner Thomas as the board president to increase the amount with council appropriation.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Purdy? I appreciate all the hard work that it took to organize this, and it's such an important thing. It's not something we've done before. You know, I know we've provided bins and rollaways and things like that when we've had tornado damage, but this is a first, and I just appreciate, appreciate the work that went into organizing it and ensuring that people are aware of it and can sign up. So folks can still sign up? Okay. Ah. Okay, great. Yeah, it's wonderful that that's on the website, and it might be good to put a note on the homepage that the signup is gone, but, and for folks who do have tree limbs, branches, I would say limbs, not branches, because obviously, we want the bigger stuff because they're usually grappling hook, we will encourage you to get that debris into the right of way so it can be picked up. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Githens?
Is there a chance that any of this will be reimbursed through FEMA?
Commissioner Jones? Comments, questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the addendum to Bluestone Storm Debris Removal, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item.
Move approval of Resolution 2024-30, surplus property.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Purdy? I think it needs to be closer to her. That's part of it.
Oh, no. It seems like this is a whole new mic now.
There you go.
All right. This is just housekeeping for us in that we have some surplus property that is from Parks and Recreation Prosecutor's Office. Parks and Rec has a couple of commercial mowers, and those will, those have a combined value of about $7,500. And the Prosecutor's Office has an L wood-shaped desk, and both of these, actually, the Ferris mowers will be available for auction, and the desk is, once it's surplus here, is going to be disposed of as it has no value.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
I thought the Ferris motors were going to be traded in at Richard Small.
They were, and if they do not sell, that is what will occur.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-30, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item.
Move approval of Vet Environmental Engineering Phase II Radon Testing for the Courthouse. Fund name: Cumulative Capital. Fund number: 1138. An amount of $23,787.59.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Mr. Griffith joining us.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Alex Griffith with the Monroe County Maintenance Department of the Courthouse. This agenda request is to accept the proposal for Vets Environmental Engineering LLC in the total amount of $23,787.59. This will be providing additional radon mitigation work at the Monroe County Courthouse.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I hope that this will actually take care of the issues.
Yes. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is something that's important to deal with. Thank you for doing that.
Appreciate it, and it's good to have you at the microphone. You're always here, but it's good to have you at the microphone. So we have to come up with a really tough question for him. No, I won't. All right. Baptist microphone. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the Vet Environmental Engineering Phase II Radon Testing for the Courthouse signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
This is one that I'm really, really excited about. It's a change in our personnel policy. Move approval of ordinance 2024-30, parental and family leave for county employees.
Second.
We've got two 2024-30s.
Nope. One's a resolution, one's an ordinance. Oh, thank you.
We're safe.
We're good.
We're safe.
Yeah. We do have a motion, and we do have a second, and we do have Mr. Rickain joining us today.
Good morning, Commissioners. During the June 28th meeting, we brought this policy to, to you for your consideration. It was approved, and then it was submitted to the prosecutor and Board of Judges for approval, and both agreed that this should be implemented. Since then, I did make two minor changes to the policy, which I provide it to you via text, by a handout up there. The first change is to Section F. It just adds some language that was inadvertently omitted to make the sentence read more clearly. And then the second change is to Section I, and it just is adding clarity that any time an employee is on paid leave, their need for a release from a doctor to be reinstated to work is going to be governed by FMLA. So there are some, some circumstances in which a release wouldn't be needed, and so FMLA is going to just govern that.
That is a typo. I saw that, too. To the last one be governed by the code of federal regulations?
I can make that change.
Sounds good. That's just Scrivners. All right. Excellent. Thank you. So this is making it official because...
It's making it official, and then this would also mean that it would become effective today.
Nice. Oh, just got a little, little chill. That's awesome.
This is huge.
Yeah, it is. It's really great. So comments or questions, Commissioner Githens?
When I was telling a citizen about this, they were like, what, the county doesn't already have this in place? People were surprised, but I think this makes us much, much more competitive.
competitive as an employer, and I think it's the right thing to do, especially for... We've got county employees like Ms. Ridge, who's here, who've been with us for decades. And I think we need to acknowledge the work that our employees do. So this is one step we're doing.
I agree with all of that. This is certainly a wonderful thing to be able to do for our employees, and I just wish we had done it a little sooner.
This is great. Thank you for all the hard work to get us here. E and Employee Services, thank you. I know that these kinds of things are not easy. They don't just happen, and I'm really proud that we're doing this. So let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U-Hill.
I think that we... Actually, we're discussing this for like five months. This just not just...
Oh, yeah.
Didn't just fall out of the sky, so...
And I know you worked on it, too. I should have mentioned that.
No.
So thank you. Thanks to everyone. All right. With that, all those in favor of approving Ordinance 2024-30, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, next item, please. Another great thing.
Sorry, I need to take a deep breath here.
I know. That's good.
Move approval of Tandem Parental Support Agreement. Fund name: Self Insurance. Fund number: 4,700. In an amount of $60,000 annually.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have E joining us.
Yeah, so in conjunction with the parental leave policy, we would like to extend some additional support to parents to help them with their new person in their life. And so this is in agreement with a local organization, Tandem, that provides that parental support. And they're working with employers to get employees to transition back into the workplace by offering basically anything you can think of that would help a new parent. They are providing that, whether that be classes at their facility, or in-home support, or just even advocating on their behalf. And we talked about this at a meeting a few weeks ago also.
Really awesome. Thank you. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, thank you so much for doing this. It's truly a wonderful thing. Having been the mother of a very colicky baby, I sure wish we had had this available way back then.
Commissioner Giffens?
I would have been first in line to use this when my boys were born. They were both emergency C-sections. When my second one was born, I had a toddler, and my husband was commuting out of town.
Wow, yeah.
And so I would have really appreciated having this kind of service. So I'm pleased that you've identified this and brought it before us.
Yeah, that's really good. And so this could be for somebody who has brought a child in not just through the natural birth process, but also through adoption?
Absolutely, yeah. Fostering, adoption.
Perfect. That's great. Excellent. All right. Yeah, huge thank you. This is what makes Monroe County great. So thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U-Hill. It's seeing none. All those in favor of approving the Tandem Parental Support Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Great, thank you.
Very happy and proud. Thank you so much. Ah, such a good thing. On top of the ambulance unveiling this morning, it's just good news after good news after good news. It's nice to have that. Next item, please.
Move approval of EGISBLN USA Inc. for Right-of-Way Services for Eagleson Bridge Number 922. Fund name: Eagleson Bridge Number 922. Fund number: 8176. In an amount of $19,800.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Ridge here to tell us all about it.
Well, my stuff is not as exciting.
It is good. This is good.
So this is for right-of-way engineering services to begin right-of-way acquisition for the Eagleson Bridge 922.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, Ms. Ridge already answered my question earlier.
No, I don't.
Right. So this is the bridge on the IU campus that is going to be put in our inventory.
Correct. So we actually... There was... This bridge has been owned by IU for many years. It needed replaced for many years. We had to go through the steps to... We reached an agreement with NDOT. City of Bloomington is involved, of course, since it's their street. It was IU's bridge, and then we have bridge inventory and do inspections. So it was agreed upon that NDOT would fund replacing that bridge. We would never accept that bridge in the condition that it was in. So they are working with us. They did the design at 100% at NDOT cost, which was just under $1 million at this point. The right-of-way services will be 80/20, and then going into construction, I believe it's in the fall of 2025 for a letting date, and then it would be 80/20 there. We had agreed to take... Or I guess I agreed to take on that future expense. In exchange, they had ended up funding the Cars Trail extension at 80/20, which was $2.4 million on that project. So it was kind of, you know, a need at the time for the Cars Trail. I think we only had $155,000 from the... Through the MPO through that. So, yeah, we kind of made that deal going forward. It was just... It was good timing for... Especially for Monroe County came out ahead on that.
We certainly did. And I... This is, you know, don't ask a question unless you know the answer. But I didn't know part of the answer, so thank you for that. But this really exemplifies how wonderful you are at your job and your staff. You know all of the funding streams, what's coming, what's not there, what we need, and you make everything work and balance, and you bring great projects into the county. So thank you. Really appreciate that. That's really awesome. All right. So my other question is, I would assume that this is gonna be like a spring... A post-graduation event to actually get this in 2026?
So if it goes to letting and fall, they will probably... So technically, a contractor wouldn't start until after April 1. There's a lot of utilities. The railroad is involved, so there's a lot of moving parts to this project. But we also were working with IU on timing. Of course, it's gonna be a long project, so it'll be throughout the school year. But yeah, we'll work our best with IU and the City of Bloomington to coordinate for that and IU's campus.
Yeah, yeah. It's so busy there already. It's just... It's... Once the school year starts, it's hard to traverse campus if you're just trying to go from point A to point B. Thank you so much for your work on this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U-Hill. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving EGISBLN USA Inc. for Right-of-Way Services for Eagleson Bridge 922, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item.
Yes, move approval of NDOT for Right-of-Way Services for Rockport Road Bridge Number 308. Fund name: Rockport Bridge Number 308. Fund number: 8166. In an amount of $33,680.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge?
This is also for a bridge replacement project. It's Rockport Road Bridge 308. We are moving into right-of-way acquisition for this. So this is the federal aid portion that is covered for reimbursement for that right-of-way acquisition.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens? No. All right. I don't have any questions either. I know the folks are going to be happy to get this project done, too. All right, so let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U-Hill. All right. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving NDOT for Right-of-Way Services for Rockport Road Bridge Number 308, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. And we do have one appointment we'd like to make today.
Yes. Unfortunately, the Parks and Recreation Board lost a longtime member, Phil Cornwell, recently. He had sent in his resignation in June, and unfortunately, he passed away recently. So I'd like to nominate Noel Conyers to be Mr. Cornwell's replacement. This is an appointment that will run through January 1 of 2027.
Second.
Just to the Parks and Recreation Board. Sorry.
All right.
Sorry.
We have a motion. We have a second, and our sympathies go to the Cornwell family. It was a longtime member of that board. My gosh.
Always had something... Oh, he was just... I adored his spirit.
All right. All those in favor of approving Ms. Conyers' appointment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. So we do have some announcements. Just a reminder that folks can still report storm damage to IN.211.gov or can call 211 to report storm damage, but also that for now, the Bluestone agreement will likely be more area-based rather than reporting-based. So we will ask folks to stop by the emergency management page. We do have to get appropriation first before they're going to continue working their contract. But really appreciate... I've just seen so many neighborhoods, really, where neighbors have stepped up to help one another, and it's really what our community is all about. And I feel badly for those who have suffered a lot of damage, but appreciate everybody stepping up and helping one another out. COVID testing is available at the... Test kits are available at the Health Department, 119 West 7th, and also at the Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive, where you can also book an appointment for any vaccinations you may need. As always, we are accepting applications for boards and commissions, and right now, we're really looking for applicants to the... Oh, my gosh.
RDC.
RDC, thank you. Redevelopment Commission. And that is an important task. You just have to be a resident of Monroe County. So we do ask you to go to CO.Monroe.IN.us and fill in an application. But it's also a good time to look at the... All the boards and commissions and go ahead and apply for something if you're interested. We do continue to have our office hours six times each month. You go to CO.Monroe.IN.us, look at the calendar, and you will find six different meeting days and times where you can talk to one of us, offer your comments, concerns, anything. We'll talk about it. And the next blood drive, which is hosted by IV Tech at Shreve Hall, will be Wednesday, August 28, from 1 to 6, and Friday, August 29, 10 to 3. You may also go to redcross.org to make an appointment. We do encourage, because it is still storm season, folks to sign up for the Resident Alert Notification System. Click on the megaphone on our homepage, CO.Monroe.IN.us. We have continued and increased the fund to provide more rural housing repair for our residents and for homeowners who are in residence in their home outside the City of Bloomington, outside the town of Ellisville. Please contact your township trustee. The exception is Perry Township. Residents who live outside the City of Bloomington are asked to contact us at our office. And I think Ms. Purdy wants to add something to us to that.
Yeah. The only thing I really want to add at this point in time is that based due to storm that we had and then the technological issue that we had, I have not gotten to the applications received since about, I think it was June 27, the last Friday of... Before the world kind of blew up a little bit for me. So if you are waiting for a response, just hold tight. I'm working on those, and so hopefully, I'll get something available to everybody next week, because I anticipate I'll get everything to the Building Department by the end of this week, and then I'll hopefully hear from them next week. I did send emails to those that I could, and I've notified our trustees that had forwarded information just so that they could help their constituents know that they've not been blown off. It's just been something I haven't been able to get to, but I'm gonna get to it.
And I just want to give another shout out to the Monroe County Fire Protection District. They brought their... The two new ambulances for a little show and tell. I've been cutting this morning at 9:30, and we're just so impressed with the professionalism of Chief Dillard's Fire District. It is really something to see the plans and dreams actually come to fruition, and what a great service to Monroe County. So thank you to my colleagues. Thank you to the council. Thank you to everyone on staff, the Auditor's Office, Ms. Purdy, everybody who helped make this happen, too. And they really had the brunt of the work. And it is... It's really exciting to have these two new ambulances out in the field. So huge thank you to them again. Now, we do have a... Do we have anything else for... Go to the order.
I was gonna say that in addition to the RDC, we have this newly established opioid settlement appropriation board.
Ah, yes.
That we are gonna need some folks to come on board really quickly.
Okay.
I will check to see if we've had any applications. I know I've reached out to a few people. I also just wanted to say thank you also to the Fire Protection District. They had two runs already yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
And what folks don't...
Their first day.
Yeah, their first day. What folks don't understand in that is that the Fire District, over half of their callouts are for medical issues. And so this is a critical addition, I think, to what's happened here. And I applaud.
Life-saving. This is about life-saving.
It is.
Great. We do have a work session. Would you like to just come back at 11 for that?
Sure.
Eight minutes? Okay. Great. We will come back at 11 for our work session, and until then, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.